Good evening, I'm Art Whitman, Chair of the Shastberry Select Board and I would like to bring this meeting to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, April 19th, 2021. First order of business, I'd have to ask the members of the Select Board if anybody has a conflict of interest with anything showing on the agenda?
Oh.
Seeing none?
None.
Do we have, we have some minutes from previous meetings, what are their dates?
April 5th is the only one.
Minutes for, for meeting of April 5th, do I have a motion to accept it as presented? Moved by Tony, second by Ken, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so carried. Announcements, I guess the only announcement I've got is that during our meeting at 6:45, wherever we are in the schedule, we will stop and we are having a presentation from the Department of Environmental Conservation about the reclassification of the water, underground water in areas that affect a little bit of Shastberry. It's mostly in Bennington, but there are areas that do affect Shastberry, so we will be breaking out at that time and letting them do their presentation. Anybody else got any announcements? Okay. Public comments?
Well, we have warrants, Art, first.
You're right, warrants. Go ahead, Dave.
We have the one check warrant, number 32, for $73,064.18.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Tony, second by Ken, any discussion? What, what warrant is this, Dave?
So, check warrant 32, I can go down the major ones if you'd like.
If you would, please.
We have a blue cross for 7988. Bearcom, which was the radio equipment for the new dump truck, was 1652. The sheriff's was 1665. There was a combination of 5,414 dollars to repairs on Truck 4, which had to do with leaks in the cooling system, leaks in the air conditioning system, and leaks in an air brake system. Air ride system, sorry, the cab air ride. 11,964 to Harrison Schrader, that was for the electric exacation equipment. We split that expense with the fire department, wrote it on that a couple of meetings ago. $2,393, the Home Depot, we're replacing the doors at the restroom at Howard Park. One of them was, was barely functioning. There's a total of about 2,000 to New England Municipal Resource, which is fees. They're providing help and resources to the listers to put out the grand list. NorTrax was 3102 for the grader, just some routine maintenance. Solvent Powers for 4,779, which is part of the audit fee. TAM for 7,469, which is the monthly. Barry, could you mute?
You can.
No. Alright. BLTC exit was a thousand dollars to pay off a deductible for one of the axes we had this winter. Longford Crushstone, 5104. And William Daley, 1967, which is all materials.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? All those in favor of that check warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Hey, Joe.
Hello.
What else do you have, Dave?
That's it for warrants for tonight and the meeting, so we're up to public comments.
Okay. Is there anybody? Anybody for a couple of public comments, please? Yes, Barry, go ahead, welcome.
Well, thank you. It was late in the afternoon when I sent an email to Dave and to the Commissioner, the NR Commissioner and, and several members of his commission about the subject you're going to discuss later. And I would like to have it, if possible, have it read, or I can read it.
That's fine, would you, would you prefer to have it read once, once they start their?
Yes, please.
During, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome to do that.
Could we ask people to mute if they're not actually speaking? Because I'm getting background here, I'm not sure where it's coming from. Art, if you want to move the treasurer up, because we have about nine minutes before the DEC is supposed to start.
Glad to, are you there, Melanie?
Yes, I am.
You're on.
Yes, I'm here. Hi there.
Hi. Go ahead, you're on.
I'm on now?
Yeah, because we gotta wait for DEC to come on at 6:45, okay?
Okay, yeah, sure, go ahead, if, if you could put up the cash flow, I'll make it pretty quick, actually.
Just working on it.
While we're waiting for that, I'll just send out another reminder that people have until May 17th to get their homestead declarations in. That's my public service announcement every couple of weeks this time of year. Um, let's see, what can I tell you about this? We got our highway state aid, you'll see that, 41,000. The inter-fund transfer, I believe we talked about last time, that's just, just getting the money back to the general fund from the reserve accounts where those big checks were written. Um, if you want to go down a little bit, we can look at the cash position as of today. A little bit more. There we go. So, that, that's our actual cash in the bank to get us through the end of June, we're in really good shape. I'm, we'll have to see what the final reconciliation with the schools ends up being, but as of right now, it doesn't look like we'll need a, a line of credit. If we do, it probably won't be as, as big as it's been in past years, so I'm feeling good about that. Um, let's see, I didn't, since this is one of these mid-month reports, I didn't bother showing where we are with the budget, but I'll show that next time. We're right, as I've said in past meetings, we're right where we want to be. If we want to take a quick look at the reserve accounts.
This is as quick as I go. There we go.
Okay, so that, that's the, the other side of the, that big transfer, you can see that's coming mostly out of equipment. We did talk about that last time. The, most of the other activity has been in the, in water, we've gotten, we're still getting a few payments from that, from the, the last bills that went out in November. And I guess they'll probably be going out again in next month, so that, that'll start climbing again. And then there was some other, we got some kind of an EPA loan payment too. So that's why the water there at the 260 fund is so high. Nothing else particularly going on, you can look down a little bit at the, the bottom line there, if you just do, or did I not include it, like one more line down? There you go. Yep, so, so that's in, in good shape too, that's pretty much where we want it to be. Um, any questions about any of that?
Any questions from Melanie?
No.
No.
Okay.
Excellent job, again.
Thank you.
See you guys.
Okay, thank you. With the board's permission, I don't want to start on something that may have a discussion in it. So I'd like to go down to the 2021 Shastberry Fire Officer's Approval. That's just a, kind of a formality, why don't we do that while we're waiting for the Commissioner?
If I can just interject, Peter Walk is not going to be able to make it tonight.
Okay.
So, we do have our state team here, but whenever you're ready, please finish your business.
Oh, you are ready?
Yeah, but if you need to finish what you're doing.
No, I was, in fact, I was just skipping around so that we wouldn't hold you up. So if you're ready to go.
Art, if I, if I could, we advertise this for the exact 6:45 start. I don't want anybody logging in at 6:45 and we've been talking for three or four minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Perfectly fine with us, we were aware of 6:45.
Okay, thank you.
So Dave, why don't we do, list off the Shastberry Fire Officers and, and we will approve of them.
Okay, the Shastberry Fire Department, the Chief Officer is submitted to the Shastberry Select Board for approval for 2021, 2022, is longtime Chief Joe Vatican versus Assistant Chief Mike Taylor, Second Assistant Chief Ed Schull. That is the same officers we've had for the last couple of years.
This is just a formality, so if somebody wants to make a motion to accept those as presented to us. Motion made by Ken.
Second.
Second by Tony, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Got a, got a few more minutes, but I really don't want to start something that's going to.
Can we do the CUD appointment?
Certainly, yeah, why don't we do that? What the CUD is asking for, a resolution appointing a representative to the governing board of the Southern Vermont Communications Union District. In the past, Tim Scoggins was the representative, I spoke to him last week and he said he would be very happy to do it again. And we have an alternate, Michael Corey, who would be happy to be the alternate. So move.
So moved.
Tony, that's a motion by Tony. Second by Ken, any discussion? So carried.
Art, I'll need you to sign that tomorrow when you come in.
Yeah. Got two minutes. I guess we will wait till 6:45.
AR?
Yes, Joe.
I, I did want to say, when you're naming off the firemen, that those are three men that are very passionate about what they do.
Tell me about it.
You know, I, I think we're really lucky to have those guys.
We have an excellent fire department, we really do.
Yeah, we do.
There, there's a core of, core of people that, that keep a, a degree of professionalism at that place.
Yep.
It's a long 30 seconds to 6:45.
Watch, partner.
I think this is the longest silence I've ever heard at a Select Board meeting, ever.
There's John.
Yeah, it's John.
I think we're good to go, Art.
Yeah, so. So, this is the part of the program where we promised you that we would bring DEC in. John, are you the leadoff, John Schmelzer?
I, I think Chuck Schwer, who's our Division Director, is going to take the lead, but Richard Spees and John Beeling is our legal counsel to answer questions. Richard is the, my, my co-project manager, we've been working on this together for the last five years, but Chuck's been, been leading us for the last four or five years as well, so Chuck, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, John, and first off, thank you very much, Select Board, for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to share this important step in the corrective action process for the PFOA problem you've all been living with. My name is Chuck Schwer, as John indicated, I am the Director of the Waste Management Prevention Division. First off, I want to make sure you're aware that Peter Walk sends his apologies. He had every intention of being here tonight. He was able to attend the last two Select Board meetings, but something urgent came up that he was unable to make tonight. So, you've got myself and as John indicated, John Schmelzer and Richard Spees, who have really been my two-point people who've spent endless hours down trying to help solve this problem, spoke, spoken to residents in Bennington, North Bennington and Shaftberry thousands and thousands of times, so they're really the experts on this. I just wanted to TFD issue, we also have John Beeling, our legal counsel, DEC General Counsel, if any questions come up on the settlement agreement. But again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this groundwater reclassification process that we're part of. It certainly has generated a lot of interest and we want to make sure everyone really understands exactly what it's all about. If you're okay, we have a very short, like five-slide presentation, which I think highlights some key things about the reclass, and then from there, we will make ourselves available to answer as many questions from you and the community that come in. So if you're okay with that, I'll share my screen.
It's your show, go ahead.
Alright, thank you. You will need to give me access to allow that. The wonderful world of Zoom.
Are you going to share now?
Yep, it looks like I got it.
Okay.
Is that showing up for you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well again, thank you for this opportunity. To go on to the, our first slide, so not that any of you need a reminder of how we got here. You've all lived it, I'm just amazed, it's been over five years since this all happened. We were part of the original team that came down, Richard, John and I, back when it was first discovered in February 2016. I think the really important part to take away from this slide is, is it was our commitment and we remain committed to ensuring that everyone in the area gets potable drinking water as a result of this PFAS or PFOA contamination in the area. It's included connecting people to water lines, providing bottled water or point-of-entry treatment systems, and we've stayed true to that cause. And what's allowed us, a really critical piece of this, is having a responsible party that was able to fund it. And as many of you know, there was two settlement agreements that happened over the course of this project, one in 2017, which really affected the west side of the site, and then in 2019, that affected the east side of the site. So what corrective action work is really the key to the highlight, to highlight tonight? Probably the most important project has been the extension of water lines. So far, in the entire area, there's been 480 residents or businesses that were eligible to be connected. Of those, 438 have agreed to be connected. And with that, 365 of those connections have been completed to date. We do expect that this project will be completed, all the waterline connections by the end of the summer. So what else has been going on? Well, there's 140 private wells or businesses' wells that have not been impacted over the 20-part petroleum standard that the state adopted. So those are wells that are either completely clean or have very low concentrations below the health standards. And work will continue to monitor those until this site is completely cleaned up and addressed. In addition, there's 33 wells that have contamination above the standards, where a point-of-entry treatment system is removing the PFOA. And those were locations that, for many various reasons, were not eligible or able to be connected to municipal water supply. And an additional five wells that were in that category of having a point-of-entry treatment system, we have successfully worked with the consultants to install a replacement well that's found a clean aquifer, so that they don't have to rely on a treatment system for removing the contamination, it's actually free of contamination. So that was something that was quite successful, it's just been done on a few wells, but again, an important option for us moving forward. The other piece is what we're here to talk about tonight, which is the institutional control or the groundwater reclassification to ensure that future wells aren't adversely impacted by the PFAS. We'll continue to evaluate the feasibility of these remedial options. There is a opportunity for us, fought in a, what we call a five-year review with St. Cobain, to make sure that everything we thought, when we signed these settlement agreements, is going according to plan. And then an important piece, as I mentioned, St. Cobain is committed to conducting the long-term monitoring, both of the clean wells that we talked about, those 140 wells, but as well as the 33 wells that have point-of-entry treatment systems, and they're required to monitor and maintain those. And then what's really important is, they're not, they're not getting off the hook in like 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years, they're getting off the hook when it can be shown that the aquifer is clean, and not just one sample, they have to show it for approximately eight rounds of sampling, so it has to, we have to be confident that's, that all the wells are clean before St. Cobain is released of this obligation. So now, really getting to the, the key points for tonight. Why are we even doing this? Why are we classifying the groundwater from Class 3 to Class 4? Well, probably the most important thing is to establish a formal process so that people moving forward into the future are aware of this issue. We don't want, in the future, someone drilling a well unknowingly, unaware of this problem. It seems hard to believe people wouldn't know, but five to 10 years from now, people may have forgotten about this problem. So this establishes a clear process to ensure that the well does not get installed and no one knows it's contaminated, or it is installed in a way that could lead to the spreading of contamination. And this is really important, because we do expect that this contamination will be around more than five years, probably decades. So again, all of us in the room today are aware of this problem, but we don't know in the future if people will even be aware of it. So this creates the process to ensure that, that that's acknowledged in part of any future redevelopment. It requires a formal mechanism to notify landowners and well drillers and permitting agencies of this problem, and so that they'll be able to make an educated decision as to what's the appropriate next step, if, again, they're looking to install a new well. And it provides clear criteria and restrictions for drilling any new well. It prohibits drilling a new well within 200 feet of an existing waterline, unless there's extenuating circumstances. You can imagine if someone had solid bedrock they had to drill through, there is a mechanism that they could apply for an avariance. And it also creates clear well construction details. So as I had mentioned earlier, it, it, it gets away from spreading contamination from one aquifer to another. So in other words, knowing that, say, in a particular area of contamination is in a shallow aquifer and, and you're drilling down into a deeper, you don't want that shallow aquifer to contaminate a deeper aquifer, so there's clear well construction requirements to prevent that. And the last slide I'll share with you, again, the, the Class 4, it, it needs to account, and we've heard this loud and clear from homeowners of those 140 wells that have clean water. It needs to clearly account for the fact that there is potable groundwater, drinkable groundwater in this area. There's certainly lots of areas where there isn't, but there are areas where there is, so it must account for that. It's got to recognize that this, the areas that are contaminated are likely to be contaminated for decades. As I mentioned, the 140-plus drinking water wells within the proposed reclassification areas that don't have PFAS, they need to be recognized. And then, let me just get this last bit. Again, and the overall piece is to make sure, moving forward, that we're providing potable water to the, to future uses in this aquifer. That's a really broad overview, I know, but I think the key is now to answer any questions, so let me see if I can no longer share.
Hey Chuck, before you, you, you no longer share, can, can you just show the map at the, at the end? So people can see the map.
And John?
That's in Shastberry.
Right, and so this is the proposed area of the reclassification. And actually, John, thank you for that, I did want to ask you or Richard if there are any key points that I missed, that you'd like to, before the questions start, that you'd like to share?
I think, I think you covered it very well.
Yeah, the only thing I might add, Chuck, is there were five replacement wells that have been successfully drilled. Actually, over the last three weeks, we've had two additional replacement wells installed. We don't have any sampling results on them yet. And the other 33 wells that have point-of-entry treatment systems on them, we're doing evaluations to see if replacement wells is an option for those people as well. So the, the real long-term goal is to try and get everyone water that is not contaminated above health-based standards. We won't succeed in every case and we will have some treatment systems remaining that St. Cobain will, will keep, but, but that's our, that's our attempt, that's our goal. Oh, and then, John, did you want to mention the roads in Shaftberry, like Town Line and Madison, that the Select Board might be most interested in that are inside the area?
Well, you mean, with respect to, to the major, the major roads that are within Shastberry, which is Lamb Road, Town Line Road, part of Madison, and Art, I might, am I missing another major road there? Oh, Route 67 West and East.
Yeah, that's the, that's the addition one, Route, Route 67, yes.
Yeah.
And if I may just have the mic back one last time, there was one piece we didn't add to the slide that I think is, is really important, is we've heard pretty resoundingly that folks are concerned about the reclassification having an impact on property values. We understand that, we appreciate it. It's really our opinion that the reclassification just establishes a clear, excuse me, my dog is hitting a squeaky toy, a clear process to ensure any new wells are. Hey, hey, cut it out, bud. New wells are installed to prevent contamination, and it, it's, it's not that we don't appreciate the, the potential devaluation, but it's our opinion, it's the contamination that is the cause and not the reclassification. The reclassification just provides the. the the clear process where folks need to know about it moving forward. And and I understand that's that's a hard pill to swallow, but the reality is the contamination is what's driving this, not necessarily the um fact that groundwater is reclassified. And I know not everyone agrees with us on that and and we're here to continue to receive feedback on 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 this part of the process, but uh I did want to share our perspective on it. So with that, we're we're open to take questions from the select board, from the public, however you deem uh appropriate.
Uh Dave, what uh you've got a screen about um people that are
Yeah.
have guests.
Yeah, I can start going through. Uh, I think we'll start with Barry because he had asked to be able to read something into the record. And then uh anyone else who uh would like to, they can just raise their hand or hit the attention button. So Barry, if you uh want to go ahead.
Yeah, I'll uh have to bring it up on my screen here. This is a letter I sent to uh Commissioner Walk, John Schmelzer, Richard Spees and Chuck. We are Diana and Barry Mayor. We live at seven forty three Town Line Road in Shaftesbury. We've had our well tested for PFAs since St. Cobain began the program. It has never exceeded ten point four parts per trillion, and that was only once since two thousand sixteen. It has mostly been below six point six parts per trillion. The proposal to identify water sources in an area that includes our home is understandable from a public health viewpoint. It will, however, affect the value of our property in spite of some claims by state officials. To the contrary, imagine if any of you were shopping for a home for your family and found that the well had been declared non potable. I believe anyone would consider that an important negative in your consideration. We believe the proposed, the area proposed should have exceptions for tested water sources that are below the standard maximum of twenty parts per trillion. It is our understanding, and this is something I need clarification on, that St. Cobain is responsible for drilling a new well and or providing homeowners with a functioning filtration system if their wells exceed the maximum considered safe. We also feel that all wells in the area that are to be labeled non potable should have remediation by St. Cobain so that our properties don't have that designation hanging over them. And and we just signed it.
Okay, thank you, Barry. Uh Scott?
Uh, hi, good evening. Sure, thank you. Um, good evening, Scott McInnany, also from Town Line Road, Barry's neighbor to the west. Um, I echo a lot of the things that Barry said. From a, from a, from a market of marketability perspective, uh I I appreciate the the comments as far as the the value of property based on uh contaminants that might be in the ground. Bottom line is, I think both Barry and I have been in on this property long enough to have purchased it when there were none. Um, and if I'm a person who's looking to purchase a home in Shaftesbury, in Bennington, in this is in this impacted area, I want to have reasonable confidence that, and actually, I mean, I'm I'm sitting here living this right now. I'm drinking water that has not, just like Barry, not tested above. But the PFAs are in there and let's be clear, they don't happen in nature. This isn't something, this isn't iron or other minerals that might be picked up in a well. This is something that is not natural, that was put here by pollution that has been shown to cause a lot of harm to a lot of people. And we're sitting here feeding it to our children, feeding it to our animals, eating eggs that our chickens are drinking it from. All of the things that you can think about, that every person who doesn't have to worry about contaminated water, and we've seen it in Michigan, we've seen it across the country, when you start to have contaminants, the unease, right? Well, there's unease. I don't know that in a decade, somebody's going to say, oh, shoot, six parts per trillion? Yeah, it's still causing thyroid disease or it's still causing cancer. Today, what I know is that I am drinking water, as is my family, that is not it's so unsafe that the state is willing to deem it un potable or not potable. And so I appreciate all of the feedback and I appreciate all of the the thought and John and the entire team at the state. I don't envy you at all. I know how hard you've worked. But I'm a person who's trying to drink a cup of coffee in the morning and with water coming out of my tap and trying to not have to buy bottles of plastic water and trying to feel good about what we're giving to our kids. And at this point, I can't feel that way. And then when we go and add in another layer about property value, property values are the actually the least of it to me. I just want to feel good about the water that we're drinking. And we're not near a public water supply. We haven't quite tested over the limit. And it just we didn't put it here. We didn't cause the pollution, nor did we settle with the state. And here we are in this, here we are in this situation. So I would urge the board to please reach out to the Bennington Select Board. Form a group. Talk about how this can be be responded to. I echo Barry, if we are in this area and we are about to have our water deemed as un potable, we should have a at least a poet system put in for every single one of us that can't get connected to public water supply and aren't quite over the limit. And that has to be St. Cobain, and whether it's the federal government that pays for it through what we read about two days ago on the banner or it's St. Cobain, I I don't really care. But in my opinion, and it should go on public record, that that's what has to happen for those of us that are in this um this awkward position of not quite over the limit. Not feeling good about what we're what we're putting into our bodies and what's coming into our house and nothing we can do about it, nor did we do anything. And I would urge the board to please bind together with the the shaft or the Bennington Select Board and put pressure on the state where possible. And the only other thing that I would add to this, the federal comment is if we are in a situation where the federal government has some fund as part of COVID to help pay for this, I don't want to pay two grand a year to have the filters up maintained. Which is what it costs. John, thank you for providing that for me. I don't, it it, the federal government either should have it for the entire time or this, the the um St. Cobain should pay for it. But simply getting it installed, which is a four thousand dollar expense isn't enough for a two for a for my my family to have to pay two thousand dollars a year to have water that we can drink. I think, I think that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh Representative Durfee?
Thanks, Dave. Um, and thanks, thank you, the select board for making this time available and and Chuck to you and your team for joining us tonight. I I just wanted to mention that in addition to the the streets, the roads that you mentioned, I think there's a little, a little bit of um coverage along Lower East Road, East East Road, uh just north of the Bennington Line and the Spur Road. Uh, there may be a couple of homeowners over there whose properties are impacted. So if anyone is listening or paying that close attention, just to be to be clear, and it was shown on the map there. Um, also, I I think Chuck, there's been a conversation about having a another public hearing as as opposed to select board meeting. Is that still in the works? Do you know anything more about uh timing for that?
Yes, I do. I'll have to uh share with you uh what our thinking is so far. But yes, we're definitely going to have a another um public meeting for sure.
Yeah, uh, the 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 date was set set today. It is May eleventh at six o'clock. And if you go to our website and probably the quickest way of doing that is is uh Google uh Bennington reclassification, and that will get you to our website that's dedicated to the the reclassification uh work that's going on. And in there, you'll see the the connection for that, for that meeting and the schedule.
And the public comment period now runs through, uh what date, John?
Uh, May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth, okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, we have um a telephone number. Sorry, I don't know who you are, but you have time to comment.
It's it's probably me, three seven eight or five four three nine. It's Representative Morrissey from Bennington. And technically, the, I was going to answer as to when the public hearing was. I um I had originally talked with Commissioner Walk about having the three select board meetings as well as having another public hearing after so that folks could come back together um to have that. And then the extension, obviously, till the end of May. So um, I just also want to thank the group that is here once again. Uh, Richard, Chuck and and John, that um you've all done a great job in trying to get everyone through this process. I know it's not an easy one. I know the residents are very concerned about it. But you have, as you have for the last five years, you've done a pretty amazing job. So I thank you for that. But yes, I was going to try to respond to um Representative Durfee to give him the information, but you already provided it. So thank you.
Um, I I could add to that, that we have an email distribution list of about nine hundred and fifty people. Uh, and we will be getting an email out announcing that public meeting to try and uh let people know that it's happening because right now it's, you know, obviously people aren't going on to our webpage every day and we get comments almost every day. I I don't know how many we've gotten, thirty or forty maybe.
Lots.
What's that, more?
Lots, yeah.
Yeah, lots. And we try, John and I try and respond to everyone individually when we get them. But we'll also be collating all of those into groups and then responding to them in a in a more formal manner uh with those responses going up on our webpage. And John, I I say we, but John's really been taking the lion's share and they'll lead in that, so. But just want to let people know, we're trying to uh address people's concerns. Obviously, we can't address all their concerns, but at least answer their questions. Okay.
Barry, one another comment?
Oh, yeah, just it's a question, actually. Uh, I've been contacted, I imagine other people have as well, by um a law firm in Middlebury about uh a class action suit. No wonder if any of the people uh present could comment on on what uh what relief that might offer us, if any, and and how it dovetails in with the uh the conversations that the state has had with uh St. Cobain. Thank you.
Mr. Bailey, are you still there?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can give that a crack. So um first of all, I would encourage anyone with with these kinds of questions to go online. There's actually a website called BenningtonClassAction.com that has all of the pertinent documents. So I would urge anyone who's listening in, who has questions about the class action lawsuit, you should go there. BenningtonClassAction, all one word, dot com. Uh, but the way that the class is set up, there's two categories of plaintiffs. Uh, one would be folks who have uh have exposure, um, meaning that their blood levels have to reach a certain metric. And I again, I would refer you to the documents. I don't want to misspeak. Um, and the other would be folks who have potential claims for property damage. And that's tied into a map. Again, on that website, you'll see a map, the area that's covered in the lawsuit. So you should be able to figure out whether your property is located within what's called the zone of contamination in the lawsuit. And so what the lawyers are seeking in that case are a couple of things. For folks who have exposures, they're going to try to set up a fund to uh fu- uh to fund medical monitoring for folks for the various ailments that are linked to PFAS. Uh, and for folks whose properties may have been impacted, they're going to, they're seeking actual property damage. So that's, you know, it's it's not a great answer. I wish there was something we could do about diminution of property values. Just to make clear, nobody here disputes that contamination causes property value to diminish. It does. Um, you know, that's that's, I'm not, no one's going to debate that. I think what I've seen in my career is typically devaluation is 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 actually caused by the contamination. And remedying or addressing the contamination is usually helpful in in mitigating that somewhat. It doesn't get rid of it. But you know, failing to address it or having a lot of uncertainty about the nature of the contamination, um, that is much more harmful than than addressing it. Um, but again, I I would really refer you to the law firm itself, obviously. I think you'll see a lot of very helpful information in that on that website.
I believe we have one last question. Uh, Representative Morrissey, your hand is still up. Do you have a question?
I do not. I'm sorry, I didn't put it down. Forgive me.
Uh, Scott?
Yeah, I'll just, uh, John, I appreciate everything that you said and and I I'm glad that um you feel the same way. I I mean, the market's going to bear, market's going to show what what property values are worth and um, that just further illustrates why those folks that are just slightly below the limit. If there's anything that can be done uh to help to help those 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 folks um on behalf of all the people on this meeting and and all the good people in the state. I know it would go a long way for peace, peace of mind for several of us.
All right, we have no more questions.
This is, this is John Schmelzer. Could could I, I just want to add one more thing. That's okay. And and uh Art or Michael, if you have a lift serve or anything for your area, uh, feel free to uh send that email that I sent out earlier to you today. That's that has the website information and also about the meeting.
Okay. Okay. And Joe, did you have a question? You're on mute. I couldn't tell if you were trying to ask a question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I I was going to ask you a question actually about the uh about the the water and all that. And I guess it would be a question for John would be perhaps, I don't know, if you can answer about the hydrology study. And if, when they did that, how far out did they go? And how often should it be done? Because don't you think with a hydrology study and testing that you you should be able to find out if it's actually going away or if it's getting worse? Or do you know what I mean?
It, uh, I do know what you mean. And as part of the uh the settlement agreement, St. Cobain has obligations to do not only the long term monitoring of those uh water supply wells, but also select uh wells that are monitoring wells as well as drinking water wells, so we can evaluate the uh the trends in contamination over time. And if there are potentially areas that are cleaned up sooner, that's something that we can uh take, take a look at and see if we can change to reclassification. Uh, you know, it it's only been five years. I know that seems like a really long time and like an eternity for everybody who's had to deal with it. But it's really a small snapshot in time. So the one thing that that I think was was very well done with the settlement agreement is that as like what Chuck was saying, this isn't an obligation for them for five years or ten years. They continue to sample and they're obligated until there is certain criteria that's met at these, uh, we call them compliance points. And 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 which includes all the mon- includes all the water supply wells as well as some other select points before uh their obligation for for monitoring or 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 doing any type of corrective action is completed.
Ken?
Yeah, um, I don't know who this would go to, but they just put in a new water line in Bennington. They came up to the dead trailer park down there. I can't remember the name of the trailer park. But that's not very far from Tower Lake Road. Uh, would give me a chance of they could, they uh, say, Mulgate, uh extend that water line up onto one, Tower Lake Road. I don't know who would want to answer that.
Uh, John, let me take a a stab at that. I don't know if St. Cobain would be willing to do that, but at our um North Bennington trustee meeting, that question was asked to Commissioner Walk at the very end of the meeting, whether or not any of the federal stimulus money or infrastructure money could be used for this area. or infrastructure money could be used for this area. And he didn't give us a hundred percent yes, but he certainly gave a hundred percent yes that he'll investigate it and try to use those funds. So I think, you know, if it makes sense technically, engineering-wise, it's, it's not a gigantic expense compared to, you know, your normal water line project, there, there is that possibility. John, do you have a sense technically if that would make sense or not really without knowing more about it?
I think we would need more about it. I think the challenging part on Town Line Road is given the, the density or lack of density on Town Line Road, and whether it's a, a one-way line or a two-way line. So there'd be a lot of technical considerations that would have to be evaluated as well. The, the challenge for, for St. Cobain, we tried to get as many water lines as we could to connect. And one of their criteria is, is unfortunately, there is some areas like Town Line Road where many of the homes are clean or below twenty, twenty parts per trillion. And I hear what you're saying, Scott, but it was really hard for us to, to tell them that they had to connect an area where a lot of the drinking water wells are below the standards. Even though I totally understand where people are coming from with that, but it's just that we have limited authority. We can only direct people to, to clean up sites that are above, or, or wells that are above the standards.
Scott?
Yeah, the only thing I would add there, John, and you and I have talked about this, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a matter of public, public comment, is there are two houses below me that are getting their water from a, from a surface spring on my property. Yeah. Either, well, one of them was owned by, by me, and it's a separate little place on our, on our land. The other one is a neighbor who didn't, who, I don't know whether they've been under a rock or what, but didn't, didn't, didn't think to talk about it. But there are, there are two places getting water from a surface spring, that their water will be tested in the next few weeks because John and I have had an exchange. But there's two more houses on Town Line Road that we don't know how it's going to come back, but we've seen how surface water in other parts of Town Line Road or water near the surface has come back. So I would be willing to place that bet, and I'm not a betting man. But that might change the dynamic a little bit, and, and I am not advocating for town water. I just want to have a, I just want to have a system that filters out the bad stuff coming in. And if that's the cheaper way to do it, I'm, I'm okay for, I'm okay with that. I want to also make that clear. I don't, yeah.
Barry?
Yeah, well, I echo what Scott just said. I'm not eager to have town water. From people who've gotten it, I, I can understand why they're not real happy with it. And, and I guess it costs something to, to get it piped into your, your house. But I think that I too would be satisfied to have, you know, a poet's system put in and maintain that it keeps working indefinitely. That's, that's my comment. I also wanted to say that John said it was really hard getting these things past St. Cobain or getting them to the agreement. Well, nobody said it was going to be easy. And, and I think if, if you need to, maybe you need to work even harder. I don't know. I'm sure you've done your best, but, but, you know, again, as Scott pointed out, this is none of our doing.
All right, I think we're out of comments. The board would like to make one last statement to the chair or anyone from DEC kind of close out.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah. Richard, you stole the words out of my mouth. Thank you so much for letting us take some time out of your meeting. I know, I know these meetings are, you always have a packed agenda, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we pick up where we left off, I guess. What have we got here?
At the Furnace Brook Road renaming at this point.
Right. Okay. Furnace Brook Road runs off from East Road, and it runs east and west. And partly down, there's a spur off to the north and to the south. And up until now, it's been Furnace Brook North and Furnace Brook South. And E911, this is not the post office. This is E911. This is the emergency response asked us to change that. We went to the citizens on the road asking for their opinion of what the north and south spurs would be, leaving the east and west Furnace Brook Road the same. And to the south, it has been mentioned that Lucas Lane, Lucas is the name of the person that passed away on that road. And to the north, it would be Red Clover Lane. Is there anybody in the audience that has any further comments on this? There isn't any, you don't see anybody, Dave?
No, there's, no.
Okay. So I, the, I would like a motion from the board to rename Furnace Brook South to Lucas Lane, Furnace Brook North, Red Clover Lane, and to keep the east and west Furnace Brook Road named or the same as it has been. Oh. Okay, we got Ken, motion by Ken, second by Joe. Any discussion? Anybody got any opinion on this? I realize there's still going to be problems with the post office, but this is E911. No further, see no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so carried. So now we got to come up with some new signs, Dave.
Yeah. We have a question from Scott.
Yes.
Sorry, I, I just, before, before I hop off, I wanted to just circle back. And I realize, I don't know how this happens with, with your board, whether it's executive session or how. But the, the request was made that the board at least look into joining forces and speaking with a unified voice with regard to the water issue with the town of Bennington that seems to have taken a stance in that direction. And I want to just ask what the process is for that in helping those of us town or, or folks within the town that are dealing with this situation? And, and how can we, how can I help or hope that the select board is working on our, or is willing to help on our behalf? I didn't get that out of that last meeting, and that was one of my requests. So I wanted to circle back there.
What the select board has got to do is we've got to meet and discuss this. And I think it's probably got to be done in executive session because there's a possibility of litigation and that sort of stuff. It probably can't be done today because we did not have on the agenda an executive session, although I suppose one could be done. Dave, do you have an opinion on that?
I don't think we can declare an emergency executive session.
Okay.
But we can have another meeting coming up and discuss it long before this gets too ahead here.
Okay.
And we've had discussions with Bennington anyway, so.
Great. That's all I can ask, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we will put it on the agenda for an executive session, so. All right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Guess we're up to the DPW report. Is Mike, Mike going to do that? Are you going to do it, Dave?
No, I'm going to take care of it tonight because it's fairly brief because we're in that time of year where mostly it's grading. This is, the first round of grading will be continuing weather permitting. The John Deere Grader was, been on the east side of town. Recent roads have been Cider Mill, Cider Mill, Maple Hill, Old Depot this week. The west side will be Murphy Hill, Shasway Hollow, and Granger Hollow. And there's also ditching going along, along Grove Road. There's also winter equipment maintenance, just getting everything ready to be put away for the summer, which is basically washing, fixing, and painting the plows and just making sure everything gets put away so it's available at the beginning of next year. So hopefully, we're done with the snow for this year.
Wait till Thursday. Dave, there was some talk about Mike was going to look in to an experimental product with lignin in it for, in place of chloride for some of the roads. Do you know if he followed through on that?
Yeah, actually, I was talking with the people in Massachusetts today. What we're looking at is getting about twenty-eight hundred gallons. It'll be enough to do about a mile or two mile of roads. And we're going to do it as a test patch. We're under contract with our other supplier, which is magnesium chloride. This is a wood-based product we're looking at now that has quite an effective bonding agent where it's been used in, in other places. So we can, you, we have our own tank. We can have them deliver some into, and they will just fill the chloride truck when they get here. They'll send us the twenty-eight hundred gallons. They'll just come out of the chloride budget because we're going to chloride a road with it, basically, except it's a different product. And we'll give it a wear test for the summer and the fall. And if it turns out to be worthwhile, we'll look into switching over to it for next year. If it doesn't work out, then we'll just stay with who we have.
I was out in the state of Washington. Of course, that's timber country and a lot of wood product. This is, this lignin is a byproduct of the, of the pulp paper mill industries. And I saw it used and was really impressed how, how it really stuck to the material. It kind of coated the, all the stones in the road and actually made them hold together also. So I was quite excited about it. And if it's economical, I think it's, this, this test will be good to see how it goes.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how, how it works out. And like I said, we're going to do it anyway, which can just come straight out of the chloride budget. There's no equipment involved. It gets laid down the exact same way as the other materials. So we're going to pick a nice, hot, dusty road and see if it eliminates that problem. And from the looks of the weather and the alleged drought coming up, be a good year to knock down some dust. So we'll see what we can do.
Okay. That it, Dave, for you?
Yeah, we had the Grandview. We just wanted to do a Grandview overview.
Yeah, I just want to do that. Okay. Dave, Mike, and myself met last Tuesday to go over what we deciphered was some of the questions and concerns that the people on Grandview Street had. And we agreed that it boiled down to just a couple of major things, which is speed of vehicles on the road and subsequently the pedestrian safety. No sidewalk, you have to walk in the road, and with their assumption that their speed of vehicles and that sort of stuff. So we are going to request the use of the speed monitoring device from ECRC. This is different than what shows your speed. It just hangs on a telephone pole or post, very inconspicuous. So people don't know if they're being recorded. They record the speed. The time actually will record the size of the vehicle, like, so it'll tell the difference between a car and a truck, so on and so forth. This, we will then analyze this, and if it's deemed that there is excessive speeds on the, on that road, the select board starts a process by which we start a process of having public hearings in, I guess there's, there's a lot, there's quite a bit to it. I don't know the exact steps. What are they, Dave?
Well, usually to change the speed limit like we did, I believe it was Elm Street. There's a number of steps, number of public hearings, number of publications that this has to go out to change the speed limit. What Art's, the device Art's talking about will have sometime in mid-May, probably. So we're going to expect the results sometime in June. And as Art said, it's very inconspicuous, which is the only real way of doing a traffic study. People won't notice it. It'll just be hanging off a telephone pole. We used it very effectively on Cleveland, and that was our test run for it before winter set in. And we'll use that on Hawks and Grandview to actually see what the volume is and what the speed is of the cars on the street.
So that, that's that part of it. The, the rest of the concerns, I think, is the ditching, the depth of the ditching and all that sort of stuff. And we have, we have answers for that, for their concerns. But because of the amount of concern and the amount of, I guess, still, the, the concern that the residents had, they asked us not to do any more ditching. And Mike had done all the way on the east side from bottom to top and had started on the west side, which would be the left side going up the hill. There is some areas of, that people want to be cleaned out. There's a, just above where we stopped, there's a bunch of cinder blocks along the edge of the road that the owner is very anxious to have us stake out. There is a blacktop bottom to it, which is not the way that we should be doing ditches. They have actually proven that a U-shaped ditch so that the water can soak into the ground is a lot better than a lined ditch going down through. Because what we've done is we're, we're sending the water on, down through to the next guy, and it is a problem down on Hawks Avenue. So we need to slow the speed of the water down and to let it soak in more as it goes down through. So I guess what I would like is some discussion from the board on whether we should continue and finish our ditching job on the, on the west side, left side going up. I think it should be a vote of the board if you want to continue, want to finish the job or not continue the job. So it's not a decision of Joe or myself, whatever. Any discussion?
How much is left there to do?
I wish Mike was here. It is not as extensive as what's out, was on the other side. It's a lot, seems to be a lot shallower, and there are several more curb cuts, which means you don't do them, obviously. So it's probably, the job is, in my opinion, is about two-thirds done. So it's only about another third as far as volume being taken out. It, a little bit less than half of the distance.
Well, the problem is going to be if you don't clean that ditch, it's going to keep building up, you know, in it. It's going to start going out of the, the private beach individual lot.
Yes.
Or take out driveways or whatever.
Yeah, yes.
It's not really a good idea to leave them that clean.
I, I would say that I drive through there quite a bit, and the, the parts that haven't been done yet seem to be the, they're the shallowest ditches, you know, it seems like the problematic ones in terms of how deep they were, have already been done. So it seems like what's left would be less controversial, I guess, if that's the way to put it. And, and I know that, you know, sometimes people do get upset when roadwork happens near their house, but it is the right thing to do. If you look at that road, clearly, every, every driveway has a culvert, and there's big ditches up. It's obviously been a drainage issue since that road was put in. So it seems like the right thing to do, to do the job correctly now that it's, or especially since it's already two-thirds done. I wouldn't want to leave kind of the least controversial third left and have a washout or have all that material end up in North Bennington.
In, in the past, it has been a problem. The second house on the right-hand side of Hawks Avenue, as you're headed towards the White Creek Road, had a problem with water getting in his garage because it sets below the road level. And we did have to clean out the ditches there to help alleviate that. But really, all we're doing is just, we're just sending it down Grandview Street at a high rate of speed and hitting Hawks Avenue and flooding that down there. So this, in my opinion, it has to be, it has to be addressed. But I just, I think it should be a vote of the board.
Well, I feel like if you don't clean those ditches, you're going to start damaging people's houses. If, if they, if you get a surge of rain, and it all comes to one, that it dammed up in one spot. and it all comes to once and it dammed up at one spot, somebody's going to get it all to once.
Almost almost all those houses on that side of the road are below ground, below the level of the road.
Right, that's what the church be.
Yep, okay. What?
Uh, I would, I would motion
Yeah, go ahead with a motion. We can
I'm sorry, I would motion to have the road crew finish the job.
Thank you. Uh, a motion by Mike, seconded by Joe. Now, any discussion?
One more thing, uh, is what's the ditches at Hawks Avenue? Do they need to?
Uh, further down, they certainly do, down by what I call the bonding estate. Uh, they did
Almost the White Creek Road.
Almost to the White Creek Road. There's a DI there that I know was plugged and all that sort of stuff, so yes. They did, like I said, they did the first couple houses uh, on the right-hand side because of the problem that was being caused in that man's cellar, but uh, beyond that, uh, it needs to be a little bit more, and certainly just before the White Creek Road, that's a serious problem.
Yeah, I think, you know, I want to be, whatever's got to be done because it's going to start going into people's houses.
Yep, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so carried. Okay, we're uh, we are having a Zoom meeting uh, tomorrow at six o'clock with anybody on Grand View Street that is interested uh, in hearing what we've come up with. Uh, this is not a selectman's meeting. This was not worn as a selectman's meeting. There cannot be three selectmen on this meeting. Because it was not worn as a selectman's meeting, so uh, there has been a notice sent out to uh, everybody that emailed us with concerns and that sort of stuff, and they were told to let anybody else on the street be could be part of it. There is a link to it on our website and so on and so forth. So tomorrow at six o'clock, uh, Dave, Mike, and I will be talking to them and uh, telling us, answering some of their concerns. There were several questions that were asked and that sort of stuff, but we um, oh, I I know what I was going to say. There can, their request for a sidewalk, uh, it is possible. I mean, it's would be very extensive. You would have to have DI's and all that sort of stuff, storm drains all the way down through. We'd have to find daylight at the bottom of the hill to get rid of it. You can't go into the sewer system. But they seem to want us to look into the possibility of a sidewalk, so there is money available for what's called a scoping study. Is that right, Dave? Is that the right term?
Yeah, that's correct. It came out from uh, transportation last week, this year's uh, funding. Uh, it would provide enough money so that we could hire the appropriate people to uh, evaluate the area. As Art said, Grand View would require a storm drain system, just on the face of it, because of its pitch. Uh, how much, where the sidewalks would go, cost estimate, and uh, the feasibility of the entire project. So if we, that grant application is due in June, I have a mandatory meeting in a couple of weeks, and uh, if we, if we're granted, because a lot of people put in for these, if we were given the funds, the study can begin over the winter and could do some documents early next year, and we can see uh, what the actual figures for these are.
If 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 we're awarded the grant, the grant is for twenty thousand dollars, which is just an engineering study. We're responsible for two thousand of it. Is that right, Dave?
Hundred percent, yes.
Okay, so uh, this will not cost us uh, anything more than two thousand dollars just to do the study if we're awarded the grant. And again, this is only going to give us uh, a indication of what could be done, and then it goes to, or it and it probably would also have a price tag hooked to it. And then it would be our responsibility to go out and start looking for funds for grants to cover the actual work of it. And you, I think you quoted a number that the average
Yeah.
municipal cost, because
They uh, from their statements, uh, the thirty-nine projects they evaluated a year ago, uh, the average cost, uh, construction cost per foot was two hundred and thirty-eight dollars fifty-five cents. The total cost was three twenty-five thirty-eight. So to do Grand View on one side, Hawks on one side, uh, the total cost based on those projections would be eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And that doesn't include storm drains at all, so it's not anything cheap. It would have to be completely funded with other grants, which may or may not be available, but the key thing is you can't get any money until you do the scoping study. It's like the municipal planning grant I need to get to do work at Coal Hall. You can't move forward without the first step, so this would be the first step, and this would give us an idea of of what it would look like, and would give the residents an idea of, uh, you know, putting a sidewalk down uh, impacts your your property too. So it would, it would provide a lot of details for us to have a further discussion.
I I think the important thing too is, is that you just can't put a sidewalk on Grand View Street and dump them under Route sixty-seven. We have to connect down Hawks Avenue, then we have to connect to the left going back towards the variety store to the Town Line. And so it it's it's all, it's all connectivity. You just can't do one street without it connecting to something else, and that's where that's going to be some of the cost, is that you you just aren't going to do one section.
Hmm.
But but I think we've, you know, um, but I I think we've got to do it, and another thing is sidewalks are going to start costing us quite a bit of money. We may want to think about come budget time starting a sinking fund for sidewalks, because as they, the old ones that are in are deteriorating, and and they're this business of pedestrian safety is more and more important all the time, so. But that's another issue. We'll we'll talk about that later, but. So just wanted to let you know what what may be happening when we get through talking with them, okay? Any, any questions?
I I was going to ask Art, with the uh, with this sidewalk, if one was to be put on Grand View, you'd probably want to have a handrail on that tubing, then it's on a hill, wouldn't you, or no?
Don't know about that. That's part of the study.
Yeah, that's part of the study. They they, the engineers would provide all the details and what we need. It was, they're undoubtedly, there always are many questions when you get these done.
Yeah. I just thought it'd be kind of nice.
Okay, uh, what have we got next?
I think we're down to review of action items, because I think we covered everything else.
Other business? You don't have any other business?
No, we did that earlier, the CUD appointment.
Okay, uh, action items, I remember, is that we would have an executive session next next meeting, which will be the first meeting in May, is that right?
Yes.
We will probably have a uh, something to report to about what the residents of Grand View want and that sort of stuff. Was there anything else? Anybody remember anything else?
Hmm, uh, no, just that Davis, after the meeting, I'll post that warning uh, right after we, right after I hang up here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other business? Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Both.
Thank you.
Like Ken, motion by Ken, seconded by Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Good night, everybody, and thank you again.